Start our city council.
We're going to go ahead and start the city council meeting for Tuesday, November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five at six fifty P M.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, indivisible, and every single.
Give a moment of silence, please.
Welcome.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sotero?
Here.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Here.
Councilmembers Avala?
Yeah.
And Councilmember De La Fuente?
Here.
Hey, can I get Abo on the meeting agenda?
Okay. Make a motion to give through the meeting agenda.
Have a motion by Sophie?
My second, yeah.
Second by Diane, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried? Or can I get a motion on the consent agenda? A through F?
Make a motion for the consent agenda, A through F.
I have a motion by Iris.
My second, yeah.
Second by Diane? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried? Any visitor comments? Anybody online? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go.
Visitor comments, it's kind of very difficult to talk.
Would you prefer to sit down?
If you need, um, I just wanted to come today and just introduce myself, I'm Marca Gonzalez, and I'm just saying that I'm looking forward to working with everybody next year. Thank you.
Anybody online?
No.
We committee, uh, we are going to be going into public hearing at six fifty-two. Um, for the preliminary budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. So you have your packet in front of you. And you guys all get a chance to look at it already.
Like I mentioned earlier, it just gives us none that has budgeted into a lot of things, but there is no no ending balance, no spending that has been, oh, this is next budget, don't fret. These are numbers for next year.
These are just numbers for next year. Excuse me, anticipated revenue, uh, on page one and two and up to page three. Uh, and then right where on page three is where it starts the, um, anticipated expenditures. That, that's not to say that we, um, won't need to move money around or make changes to, um, but.
Any questions, Diane?
No. Sophie?
No.
Mary?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay. Check. Questions? If, if, and anybody online?
No.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead, um, any, anybody from the audience have any comments regarding our budget? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and end this at six fifty-four. We're gonna go ahead and go on to the, um, the property tax levy for the year twenty twenty-six. Sophie?
It is six fifty-five, we're gonna start this at six fifty-five. This is another public hearing. The tax levy for two thousand and twenty-six.
Are you?
Thank you, Drew.
I have a question. This is my good idea.
Outside the data.
I just have a question, though, um, this is this for the, the the tax levy for the property tax, right?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I guess it's not the time to talk about the other levy that we might have wanted to do for the library. Okay. Questions, Diane?
No.
Mary?
No.
Vera? One, you're safe, since that room comes across the same.
Little?
No.
Any, anybody in the audience have any questions regarding the property tax levy? Anyone online?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do this, um, property tax levy for ten and twenty-six, uh, six fifty-six.
We're gonna go ahead and go on to whole business, the accession and abolition of this new.
Moving into document, uh, facility use policy.
We went ahead and table, but Diane? We're gonna go ahead and go on to B.
You make a motion.
If I can get a motion to table, um, whole business on the city council for the use of the city own property located at four six, option two.
I'll make a motion to table whole business A, the reservation until you're not in, approving my doctor facility use policy navigation.
I have a motion by Sophie.
Second.
Second by Abdullah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried? We're gonna go ahead and go on to A, new business approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-seven, an interlock agreement with Yakima County Information Technology Services for the city of Matton. If I can get a business.
Make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
I have a motion by Sophie.
Second.
Second by Fudo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried? B, if I can get an approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-eight, an interlock agreement with Yakima County Information Technology Services for the city of Mathis Police Department.
Make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
I have a motion by Sophie.
Second.
Second by Vera? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried? C, approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve oh nine, permitting revenue rates per service provided by Aqua Way Systems and apparently should the city of Matton. I can get any motion?
Make a motion because of the ordinance twenty-five, we mentioned problem one.
Now, motion by Vera? My second, that. Second by Diane, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried? On approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve zero two, the tax levy increase for the year twenty twenty-six, I can get a motion?
Make a motion to her, please, this twenty twenty-five dash twelve oh two.
I have a motion by Vera?
My second, yeah.
Second by Diane, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried? Do we have any, do you have reports?
No, ma'am.
I, I do.
Perfect.
Um, the state auditor's office, because we have federal grants, will be coming back in to do an audit. Uh, they wanted to come in, uh, a couple months ago, but they have kindly waited because, uh, the way that the books were before, we didn't audit twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, um, or twenty-five, so they're waiting for that to be done before they come in, because they're gonna do those financial audits at the same time. Uh, Jamison and I have been working at making sure that the numbers, excuse me, the numbers are looking, um, better, I am almost done auditing and reconciling two thousand and twenty-three, it has been a huge task, but, um, I've got a, I've got three months left to reconcile for two thousand and twenty-three, and uh, so we're anticipating that the auditors will be coming in hopefully mid-December.
Yeah, I just have a, I just have a few things, um, one of the things, uh, when I first came on in April, that was brought to my attention was, we were supposed to have flock cameras, I don't know if you guys are aware of what lock cameras are, right? And, well, I was able to find out, we did have five of them, okay? And they were working and good condition, good order, and, you know, obviously, I'm law enforcement, so I'm gonna say they're very important. Um, but I know that we, the city hasn't paid for them to, to continue, and, um, I forwarded uh, an invoice that I got today from, from flock. We, you know, to get them and keep them going, it's a lot of money, I understand, and I'm, I'm just putting it out there, it's sixteen thousand dollars, they need to get us going again. And I just, the other day, last week, on Monday, I happened to be having a meeting with, uh, Chief Layman from Sunnyside P D, as well as Commander Desby, and in that meeting, it just so happened, earlier that morning, there was a robbery suspect over on Van Dell, and we were able to locate him in Sunnyside because of the flock cams, that's how important they are, and, um, yeah, I just wanted to bring that to the intention of the council. It's up to you guys, if you guys want to do that, and I understand, there's always so much money to go around, I do understand, but I just wanted to let you know. The other thing, guys, is we have been having, and especially this time of year, it's going to happen, thefts are going up, there's burglars out there, they're working, this is their time of year to put in their work, there's specifically two, two of them, that's our focus, um, I don't wanna say names, but, um, one of those gentleman was, uh, seen on camera, we had thousands of dollars were, were stolen of equipment from the church over here on North Street, and, um, we were able to get a face. Sergeant Mettais, I told him to go ahead and send it to prosecutor's office, because it, as far as we're concerned, you can tell who the person is, um, but it's up to the prosecutor whether they're gonna follow up on that, but we are doing everything we can to focus on that problem, um, in particular, those two problems, um, so just be, be aware of that. Please spread the word when you're out there, have people be careful, make sure if they have cameras, have them working, um, make sure that people are locking their doors, because that was the problem at the church, I don't know what happened, but the gentleman just forgot to lock a side door, or excuse me, a side window, and that's how they got it. Um, the, the other thing, lastly, I just want to let everybody know that, uh, uh, Officer Guzman is no longer with us. Um, he was sent to the academy in August, a month before I went, and he just didn't make, he's could not complete it, so obviously, they're not certified, can't do the job, so we are down. Sound of that fifteen thousand a year for the flock Cameron, I believe that's what it is, is that right, Sophie?
Yes.
A year.
We just, we haven't had council, so it wasn't.
Is that, the one thing I didn't, I better reread it, but is that because we're behind, or is that the amount?
It's three, it's three thousand a year.
Yes.
Per camera.
Yes.
Plus an administration fee.
Yes, so, so yes.
Thank you.
Fine. You?
No, Marianne, she also wanted to talk about the T I D funding, the T I D funding, I don't know, I didn't want to steal the funding.
Yep, go ahead.
So the city applied, for T I D funding this year, that's transportation funding, they gave you a lot of money a couple years ago to do the, the body seal project around town that, that, that put in the service, so kind of manage your expectations for a couple years, and they give you a lot of money in one year, you know, they have to spread the money around someone, not expect very much, um, or for a couple years after that, so this year, we're kind of strategically, the city applied for a fog seal, essentially go back over those roads and put another layer of oil on, um, you know, because essentially, it's kind of like the final piece of the treatment, you put what's down there and the gravel there, and then people drive on it for a couple years, and then come back and put another layer of oil down, which will make it look darker, um, more like engine which is typical asphalt, and you were successful in receiving that funding, so, um, you know, it's, it's not, it's a little over a hundred thousand, so in terms of street projects, it's, it's not a huge project, but in terms of like cosmetic, you know, it'll make the roads black, and some understanding and kind of finish that treatment, that's a lovely way to put it, so. Engineers usually have to get bad news, so it's good, good news, you got some money.
Yeah, so will that be the whole city, or will be the streets that were done?
Just the streets that were done as part of that project, yeah, yeah, I, I, it's my understanding, I, I don't, I don't, it's really the thought is, that material that you put down, this is, big part of that is you want it to be down, and you know, it's a little gravelly at first, and you want people to drive on it, and that's how it helps, but that's part of the process of, of the roads, and then this is coming, putting another layer of the black, the oil down.
And I was trying to put my street for like twenty-five years, since we built our home, our second home that we built, and already
Yeah.
You know how many times I've been fighting for that, and then when you called me, I was at my shop.
Yeah.
And I like, yes, you know, thank you, but the only downfall to that is, they dragged like crazy all down my street, it's like, if they run, I five, I'm serious.
Yeah, yeah, you just want to put all the city roads back to gravel, and it's a little bit, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, nope, that is unfortunate, and the hard part, there was, you know, there are very few programs that will pave gravel roads, and that was something that this program did, and so Matton, a number of other cities had gravel roads that they're finding, we can get these paved, um, and, and, and it's not paving like two inches of asphalt, it's, it's a hardened surface, but now it's eligible for funding, because it hits, it's a hardened surface, so it's eligible for, um, and it was, it was a shift in the state priorities, rather than spending a lot of them in different roads, they essentially wanted to allocate their money to put coat, coat of paint, and over a lot of pre-coat roads.
You're gonna fill in the potholes before they put that oil down and
Because there's Adam Street, right, there's, I think it was Adams, yeah, well, I don't think Monroe was part of
Yeah, that's the seal.
Yeah, so, so on, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know for sure, I believe that there may have been some, a small amount of surface restoration in that app as well, I know especially, I've been driven, you know, after council meetings, I went and drove, I think it was Adams, took a whole bunch of pictures, um, and I think that they put some, some money into that app to do a little bit of power repair, as part of that, stat street in particular, there were a lot of potholes.
I know that public works have gone out there to, um,
Yeah.
Do some work on it.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of, um, pop trucks that drive through there, it's not just during the pop season, I mean, there are a lot of agricultural trucks that drive on that road, so.
And this treatment is obviously, it wasn't like a brand new road, right, there was a coat of, it's a coat of paint, it was a layer of asphalt over the road, it wasn't an effect structure, it was, but there were some, some potholes on Adams, I think, that, that, we've been, we've been, but, we'll verify that, but that would be something.
Yeah, well, now, you said, uh, Monroe is county?
I think half of it's county.
Half of it was, and they changed it a year, year back, they went to the north side of that road.
And I'm not, that'd be something to check on the city planner, if that annexation changed, I think our, our thought was that, that, that could be the case, and then when we go to the funding agency, that makes it a lot harder, jurisdiction, if it could be all city or all county, that would be better.
Yeah.
That road wasn't included in the oil seal, though, so it wouldn't be included in the sponsor, however, it is high on, higher on the list of priorities to do something with, so, um, yeah, so if that's the case, uh, it'll come, this year's funding apps, Monroe will be the property of this, especially if it's all city. Yeah, yeah, is that one of those, I know, I went to a bunch of pictures on Monroe, that same night, I drove Monroe, took a bunch of pictures, and a few people asking what I was doing, so I was driving around, taking pictures out of my car, stopping, taking pictures, when I was hauling around on the south side, I was, what are you doing? Taking pictures, trying to get money to fix the streets, but yeah, took a bunch of pictures in Monroe as well, um, to break a lot of potholes and stuff.
Uh, really quick, Jane, I wanted to ask you, um, I know, it's a couple of weeks ago, um, and I don't know, I think the girl's got a couple phone calls, but you talked about giving a water study for the city, and you were talking about it, it was gonna cost the city like thirty-two thousand, you said, she simply wanted to do a water study.
Oh, rate study.
A rate study to bring your water rates down.
Yes, yes, it was around, it was thirty, and that was Warren and Sewer, that was Volt, because there's some common stuff.
And, um, I believe you said, which hurt our residents, right?
I said, we do rate studies, I'm not sure I've ever heard of a rate study being done that recommended rates being lower. So, based on the financial analysis, we did do our, during water system planning, it looked like rate increases were gonna be needed, um, now, since then, you're already finding that was gonna be a loan is going away, so, so that was assuming some loan payments that aren't there, um, so there's, there's always the possibility, um, but it, it was much more common that rate studies show that you need to increase your revenue, what kind of expenses.
Yeah, when was the last time we increased our, our water rates?
I know, it's been a few years, I think it was in the early, twenty-one or twenty-two, no, it's been maybe nineteen, um, I'm, I'm not sure, I know, I know in the Washington plan, there had been a rate increase some plan recently.
Okay.
Um, you know, I don't, I don't think the amount of inflation we've had the last five years, probably, the rates have not kept pace with the inflation, um, and that's the thing with rate studies is, you know, I truly, I don't love doing rate studies, because there's always the shoot the messenger thing, right? But really, all a rate study is doing is saying, here's your income, and here's your revenue, and here's projections of your increase of rate, your income, revenue, like, can you meet that or not? And here's some options to, you know, sometimes, sometimes here's the thing with rates, sometimes it's not all about raising rates or lowering rates, sometimes you may lower the cost on, you know, you might think about your water rates, right, and pay for a base rate, and then you pay it over, and you go over a certain amount, right? So sometimes, there, when you get this income, you know, wow, our projected revenue, expenses exceed our projected revenue, there's a shortfall, we need to raise more money, that doesn't necessarily just mean raising rates across the board, sometimes that means you may lower, lower your base rate, and lower the amount included in your base rate, and increase the cost of going over, so the people that use almost no water will pay less, people that use a lot of water will pay more, right, you're saying, okay, well, they use most of the water, so it's fair for them to pay more. Sometimes it's a matter of looking at different classes, and we say, you know, there, there are a few, one city I worked for, where you have significant industry that uses two-thirds of their water, so for them, it's looking at like, okay, how much are the residential water rates subsidizing the water we're producing for industry? And then there's a balance, if they actually charge industry, then maybe their fair share, they might leave, and they employ a lot of people in town, so there, there's this balancing act, though, of balancing across water use to who's paying for that, you know, who's, how much people paying for their water, how much water are they using, so there, there, and that usually goes into the rate study as well, it's not just, you know, revenue to expenses, do we need to rate, do we have too much revenue, we can lower rates, do we not have enough revenue to raise, they can usually look at different rate models as well, um, and, and see, is there some new one lost approach, um, typically, though, you know, I, the conclusion is, you don't have enough revenue, your expenses, you know, expenses are going up with inflation, and so if your revenue is not going up, same, um, we start to see a shortfall after this rates, um, and, and, and that's where I, you know, full disclosure, because sometimes, when you're the person up putting in the data, uh, and our job in that is just to advise you of your finances and, and, um, the situation, and, and do sometimes a rate model of options, and that, that was around, you know, thirty grand is the, is the running cost for, for a, a rate study where it's not an update, we're not taking, you know, one we did a few years ago, and updating it, it's like a brand new rate study, we're both water and sewer. Um, I have one client that they would like to update it every couple of years, so for them, it's a lot simpler effort, because we're not, we're not looking at all the big picture options, we're saying, well, since the last three years ago, when we did this, here's what's changed, and I know this funding package, now this is that, that funding dropped off, whatever, here's where you're at, because they're, they're trying to just check for every couple of years, so, yeah, that was a long answer to your question, but there's, there's some new work there.
You know, people keep on asking, so
Yeah, yes.
Our patient, or people that you watch online.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Jane.
You.
Okay, so, uh, council members? Thank you. I had a question about, um, oh, something about supply prices, maybe Dana knows some stuff, too, it's, what's, what's the process of, of, oh, flushing, flushing the hydrants? We're generally flushing three times a year right now, so they do early spring, midsummer, and, yeah, and late fall, or, like Well, I know they're doing it, so one of the residents, one actually, one of my neighbors said that they flush the same hydrant, they do it like three times a week, they do it the last two days in a row, and it causes all kinds of flooding by the property area where the so they're supposed to do the same one three times a week, or two days in a row? Two days. They do it two days in a row? And then sometimes if somebody calls that their water is, um, smelly, or it has, uh, stuff in it, then they go out and flush it again, is my understanding, is that correct?
Yes, it's so brutally, sorry, oh, go ahead.
Because in these, in these three cases, they said the, the, the garbage truck has gone stuck because of, in the mud, and the other ones, that was, they go lagoons around all the vehicles, and two of them were stuck in the mud, and, no, one of them was even blocking, one of them, one of them had to go out to water, go out.
So I think I'm agreeing with Brad, right, sometimes, sometimes there, you know, if there's a complaint, they may be trying to flush water, and also, a, a few times over the last few months, um, you know, residual had either got high or low in the tank, so staff was trying to flush, get water moved through the system to, you move, move the low residual water out, get residual into the system, and so it was an operational thing of trying to move water through the system, um, I don't know specifically, since they were referring to, but that could be, if they were trying to do something like that, that's why they might be flushing it for a couple of days now.
One of them, it was like two weeks ago, probably, they were trying to
Yeah, it, it could have been, um, and that would be, if there's a specific issue, you know, they, I would, when they, they contact city hall, and, you know, if fellow work staff are just trying to move water through the system, and pick which hydrants they can do that at, right, and, and unfortunately, all the hydrants flush their water out and get people's way, right, so there, uh, I don't know the specific instance, but, but I know they have been doing some, some efforts about over the last two months.
Oh, that's, I'm not, Diane, I'm sorry, the slot camera thing, so, so this is yearly, we pay yearly, how come it hasn't been paid, and how long has the debt, and it's not working, not because of my chief, it's, I have been told about it. When it's broken.
I did tell them.
Yeah, we were told about it.
I told them when we ever went to Vancouver.
That it wasn't paid for?
No, I told them that we had those cameras.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I
But yeah.
I heard it first from Larry, and then
Yeah, they said, they said, how you did.
And we had them somewhere.
They're there?
I find them.
We come, are they not installed yet either? Yes, they are.
They're there, they're installed.
Apparently, they were installed last year.
That's just for service.
The service hasn't been paid for, so you haven't ever been using it, so.
We, we have been, but we're not going to be able to
Oh, we're paying up behind, oh.
Need to pay it.
So we're afterwards, and if I
Everybody else can use, and all the other departments, because we all share, you know, if I don't want to see something in Sunnyside, I can see it, I can say, hey, there's a car that just committed a crime here, I can see it over here, and they can get that, and vice versa, but if we don't have it.
They don't pay. So we have to pay that fifteen thousand first, right?
Sixteen.
Sixteen thousand, two hundred.
So what happened is, when we got those slot cameras, they were brought in on a grant, when Garcia was here. They were brought into the grant, I don't know if you remember, and they were paid up until a certain time, and then after that time expires, um, we were gonna be told, so that when we continue, we can continue the service with, um,
And usually, those grants are basically for the initial install, and then after that And then after that, it's whether the city, whatever, decides, and then you keep going.
I think we were getting them installed, and then we were, they were gonna pay for a certain amount of time, so, um.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's a high.
So I don't know, um, you know, we don't, we don't get to touch the bills, we don't get to see the bills, that goes to the staff. So Sophie and Monty would know if we got that bill.
We just got that today.
Okay.
Just got it today, and I sent it.
Okay.
To.
So.
It, it has been in there, it was in the previous one, it just.
Well, it's barely the last meeting that we didn't have.
Okay, so we just buried our first building, Sophie?
Then it's in these claims in here.
No, it's not the first one.
No, it's not the first one, it was in the previous.
Oh, okay.
No, it was approved at the last council meeting, it just, they just haven't received the check yet.
Okay, so yeah, we, we'll make sure we get that taken care of, so we can make sure the flock cameras are.
I'll take care of it tomorrow, chief.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
Yeah, just one more thing, and then I just wanted to say, no, thank you to all the citizens who voted not working. I think this is the biggest turnout we've had in a long time, uh, the number of people who voted, actually. Yeah, that was it, but.
Do they work on some, some of our public works?
Um, they, we do have somebody that comes in, we just like, um, I know Rans out there about water, wastewater, or if not one of the guys that's on call.
Cause they were flushing, obviously.
Yeah.
So, so if they're, if they're told they have to come, or they're, um, wonder, when their phone goes off, we check, then, they have, it's not my understanding.
Yeah, if we get the microphone for those two ladies over there. I cannot hear them sometimes.
They don't want me to.
Yeah.
So, um.
Normally, I'm louder, I just kept today.
Okay.
My, my staff reports are, um, that we have our, um, dinner for our, um, Thanksgiving senior slash bingo, did a good turnout, thank you very much, Councilwoman, I am now helping, um. I know a lot of people are like, you're not yourself, you're not yourself, um. We did have two deaths in our county within a week. So, um, I'm even lucky I'm here tonight, you know, we just buried my father-in-law. And, um, so it's been very emotional for me this week. Um, but, you know, we did have, we had a great turnout. Um, we had really good donations given to, you know, um, event, and we gave out everything to all the citizens, everybody left with something that night. So that was that, um, I know we do have, um, Santa Claus is coming to town, coming up, we're gonna be doing our lighted Christmas tree, that's coming up. And our lighted parade is coming up still, so we have those commitments coming up, but, um, I do wanna congratulate the chief, so if you please, yeah, chief. Um, he passed his test, and we swore him in last week, and so, um, he finished the academy on November fifth, then he graduated, November fourth. Um, and I wasn't able to make it, but the staff, um, the ladies went and started with, so wanna congratulate you, chief, and. I know right now, um, we have, um, Officer Perkins is still out.
Yes, he, he started in late October, and he will be done in February, and I can guarantee he will be. He will make. I guess.
You guys think one from St. Francis?
Uh, no, he, he came from, he, he got, let's go from office to him because of budget cuts. So, um, I talked to their chief, and he just kind of lit up. You know, he sent me all the paperwork that we needed for his background, so it was able to save us money, and because he did feel bad, he wanted to keep him, he just couldn't. Yeah, he's a good kid. He's doing really well. I contacted the academy as of, uh, last week, just to see how he's doing. He's doing really good.
So he should be on the road in March. Or in February.
Late February.
And, uh, we do have Officer Rodriguez, he's not here this evening, he's probably out over.
Uh, he actually took Monday and Tuesday, all of a sudden can work.
Oh, thanks.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, so, um, once again, congratulations, chief. And, um, anything else? We did go out last night, celebrated our Thanksgiving, office staff did, we had a great time, we missed you too, um, last night. So, um, I think that, pretty much it. But we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven twenty five.